Stand by.
We will call the regular meeting of the City Council to order September the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Welcome. I'd like to thank all the people. Chad, I'm not sure that you can show this crowd on the tape. If you would please pan the crowd. We do have a large crowd here tonight for our public comments section tonight. So at this time, I'd like to ask everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ask Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem, Forrest Fleming, to lead us in that pledge.
Join with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and please be seated.
This time, I'd like to call on Reverend Dana McKim, the First Methodist Church, to please lead us in an invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be up here to pray with you tonight. Several people have mentioned my shirt, so I will call attention to it as well. It makes me think about the beach. The reason I think about the beach is I'm getting married in a month on the beach, on Holden Beach. Now, there's a reason why I say that. I cannot imagine what it was like to be the mayor of Holden Beach last week, nor the mayor of any town or community along the coast of the United States of America and in the Bahamas that had to endure the potential devastation or the actual devastation of Hurricane Dorian. The last time I was with you, we had been through some other national tragedy. It just seems to continue to happen. So I want to invite all of us to begin with a moment of silence that we might remember everyone who has been in the path of that horrific hurricane or whose lives have been impacted by it. Let's be in silent prayer together. Gracias a Dios por este día. God, we thank you for this day, for the opportunity to gather together as people of this community, to be able to do so in freedom and security, to be able to do so undercover and not out in the open, to be able to do so knowing that we have utilities and we have homes and we have our businesses still intact. And our hearts go out to those along the coast and in the Bahamas and in the Caribbean, people who have experienced devastation the likes of which we cannot fathom ourselves. We pray, oh God, that you would keep us in mind today and keep in our hearts and in our minds those who are without, those who are challenged, those who are struggling. We pray for those who lead us this night, that you would give them open minds and open hearts to the work that you have for all of us to do. In the name of all that was and is and is yet to be, let God's people say amen.
Thank you, Dana, so much. We probably will not be taking any action on the issue that was mentioned in public comments tonight. So those in attendance who do not want to stay for the rest of the council meeting, you're free to go. So.
You're welcome to stay, too.
You're welcome to stay, of course.
Good to have you stay.
Okay. Introduction of Council. To my far right, Wendy Cato, City Council. Forrest Fleming, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Louie Vina, City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our City Manager. Sidney Simmons, City Council. Chris Hawkins, City Council. Kelly Russell, our Recording Secretary. And Becky Brinkley is our interpreter for the deaf community.
Maybe they'd like to stay and see business conducted in their community.
Okay. Our first item of business is the Proclamation of Constitution Week for two thousand and nineteen. In your packet. This is Constitution Week for two thousand and nineteen. It is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two hundred and thirty-second anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, this year designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, a virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Morganton, to hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week and urges all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of City of Morganton to be affixed this ninth day of September two thousand and nineteen. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. I'll call on Vice Regent Janie Matthews and Alice Ayers, Constitution Week Chairman, to come for the podium. You have some comments you'd like to make.
Well, this isn't in my script, but this is a wonderful example of our Constitution at work. It gives us the right to petition government.
Absolutely.
Members of the Quaker Metis Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, thank you for proclaiming the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week in Morganton. We are marking the two hundred and thirty-second anniversary of the adoption of the Constitution by the American Congress of the Confederation on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven. In nineteen fifty-five, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress with a resolution for an observance of this historic event. It was signed into law by President Dwight D. Eisenhower on August second, nineteen fifty-six, and requires the President to proclaim the week of seventeen through the twenty-third annually as Constitution Week. The purpose of this observation is to renew appreciation for the Constitution of our country. This great document, the guardian of our liberties, established our republic as a self-governing nation dedicated to rule by law. Constitution Week provides an opportunity for all Americans to recall the achievements of our founders and the nature of limited government, as well as the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of citizenship. We thank you for helping the Quaker Metis Chapter, NSDar, to observe this special event in American history. Donna Albershan is our Regent, and I'm Janie Matthews, Vice Regent. Thank you so much for this resolution.
Alice, do you have anything to add?
I don't, except to thank you for doing this for us.
I'm going to ask Councilman Chris Hawkins to please present the proclamation to you.
I'm very honored to present this proclamation to both of you.
Good reason.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have some announcements concerning the historic Morganton Festival recap. I'll ask Abby Gentry Nelson to come forward, please. Well, force of habit.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for having me. This past weekend was the thirty-eighth annual Historic Morganton Festival. We were fortunate with some gorgeous weather, no incidences, a sold-out craft vendor event, and some of the highest numbers of festival concert attendees that we've seen in recent years. And in case you missed it, I'm very excited to announce that Eastbrook Middle School and Freedom High School won first place in the Morganton Art Design and Engineering Competition. And I hope that everyone will go and visit our Facebook page, it's under Historic Morganton Festival, to see the photo album that highlights this year's event. I'd like to thank our sponsors, and in particularly our presenting sponsor, Carolina's Healthcare System, Blue Ridge, for backing this community event. And then, of course, thank you to the city for your departmental support. Every city department was represented and worked in some way to help make this event happen, and to the over two hundred and fifty volunteers that gave their time to make this machine run efficiently. Thank you. Also, a big thank you to mayor and council for your continued support of the Morganton Festival. Without help from each of these entities, this event could not happen, would not happen, period. So thank you so much. The Morganton Festival is one of those events that brings our diverse community together to enjoy food, listen to music, shop with our vendors, and also to bond with one another. It's one of our jewels. And whether you love it, you hate it, or you're indifferent, the Morganton Festival highlights our city as one of the special spots in North Carolina. So thank you for an amazing weekend, and I can't wait to celebrate our thirty-ninth year next year, September eleventh and twelfth. You can go ahead and mark your calendars. So thank you.
Abby, it's always the weekend after Labor Day, correct?
Always the weekend after Labor Day, no matter what.
Easy to remember, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have, I think you're going to do something about Miss Morganton?
Yes, it's next.
I did not realize that was next on the agenda, but I would like to bring up Michelle Gregory and the winners of the Miss Morganton Festival Pageant. That also occurred a couple of weeks ago prior to the event. So, Michelle?
I'm Michelle Gregory, and this is Michelle Steele, and we are the directors of the Morganton Festival Scholarship Pageant. And on August eighteenth, we held the Second Morganton Festival Scholarship Pageant, which was held at the Morganton Community House. Contestants participated in a personal interview, casual wear, a competition, an evening wear competition, an onstage question, and a talent competition. A five-panel panel judge selected the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty festival royalty that stands behind me today. These young ladies join a sisterhood of amazing group of women who have held the title of Morganton, the Morganton Titles over the year. And in fact, the first title was held back in nineteen thirty-eight.
It takes a community to put on a pageant like this, and our biggest supporter is the Historic Morganton Festival. With their help, we have been able to give out a five-hundred-dollar scholarship to our Miss winner and a two-hundred-dollar scholarship to our Teen winner that they'll be able to obtain when they go off to whatever institution that they choose.
And each queen has their own service project that they're going to tell us about right now.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Gregory, and I'm your little Miss Morganton. My platform was Habitat for Humanity to help people. I was going to raise money to help people build their forever homes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Piper Erskine, and I'm your junior Miss Morganton, and my platform is to help children across Burke County with disabilities.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Madison Ramsey, and I'm so honored and blessed to be Morganton's first ambassador queen. One thing that I'd like to do this next year is to promote and support my personal platform, which is Burke United Christian Ministries. I want to encourage others to volunteer, donate, and just let everyone know about this great organization.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Emma Travis, and I'm Teen Miss Morganton. My platform is to tell people what I've learned through Jefferson Riddle Developmental Center. I have found out many ways to volunteer there and help out the center. One is by volunteering, and it's every summer, volunteers, you have to be going into seventh grade, and they basically go around with them all day, and you're with one specific person, and you just get to, like, be with everybody and learn and be with a great group of friends and learn about all different people.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Taylor Hensley, and I am Miss Morganton. Something that really appeals to my heart even before I had the pageant title was people dealing with substance abuse and addiction, and that's what I've taken as my personal platform because I'm very interested in talking to people and helping them get over their problems with addiction and substance abuse. And that is what I'm going to work to do this year with my title. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
As you can see, we have an amazing group of girls and their service platforms that they want to work for this year. And we also have their headshots that John Payne took for us that we want to give to the city for you guys to put up somewhere in City Hall. So thank you very much for your support. We greatly appreciate it.
Next on our agenda is a special introduction for the city of Morganton. He was a guest, has been a guest in the past, but now he's no longer a guest. I'm going to ask our City Manager Sally Sandy to do that introduction.
I would like to welcome Mike Music up to the podium, so those viewing at home get to put your name and your face together. We are very fortunate that just this past week, a really quiet week in the city, Mike Music joined us as the new director for Kama. He comes to us most recently from Western Illinois University, where he spent more than a decade there working in the theater industry. He has more than thirty-five years of experience in entertainment in the theater and has done everything.
I don't know how that's possible. I'm only twenty-six.
I understand. I understand. Well, you doubled up some of those years. We are really excited to have Mike here, to have his wife Katie here also, and to have them to make Morganton their home, and for them to become a part of this community and to help Kama grow and do even more in the community than it has in the past. So I welcome Mike.
Well, thank you very much. I have no prepared remarks. I have no crown. But I will make a declaration. I declare that Katie and I are proud to be living in this community. We had a wonderful weekend, the festival. You knocked it out of the park. I mean, it was fun. We had the Jacksons here. I want to thank you all for running my promo before this, for everything right there. Thank you very much.
Was it a sold-out crowd? The crowd was just so excited Thursday night at the Jacksons.
It was a very enthusiastic crowd.
Your understatement there.
We had people dancing in the aisles.
Yes, you did.
They weren't dancing on the tables, which is good, and nothing broke. So we were all good. None of the people did. The brothers had a great time, three of them. One of them is still in Saudi Arabia, and he was too ill to actually fly, but the other three had a great time. I get, one of my first introductions was at 3:00 a.m. I got to drive Tito and a couple of technicians to the airport, and that was good times.
Thank you and welcome again.
Thank you all very much.
And speaking of Kama, An American in Paris Film will be on Thursday, September nineteenth, at seven-thirty, and the Starlighters will be Thursday, September twenty-sixth, at seven-thirty. Our downtown farmer's market's on Wednesdays at North Green Street and Saturdays on Beach Street, and we have a lot going on in September with the Revolutionary War Week. I'd like to read some of those announcements. On Tuesday, September twenty-fourth and Thursday, September twenty-sixth, is Call to Freedom Day for Burke County fourth graders at the Collat Recreation Center. Almost a thousand fourth graders are expected to participate from Burke County Schools, NCSD. Morganton Day, New Dimensions, the Seven Day Adventist School, Christ Classical Academy, and Area Home Schools. On Saturday, September twenty-eighth, the Annual Commemorative Crossing of the Catalba at Greenly Ford Behind Judge's Restaurant from eleven a.m. to one p.m. This event is open to the public. And on Sunday, September twenty-ninth, the Annual Living History Day, which is a time of remembrance at the Charles McDowell House located at one-nineteenth St. Mary's Church Road, it's open to the public. This event will feature demonstrations of colonial era skills, clothing, weaponry, gardening, and children's games, as well as storytelling about the Overmountain Men and the victory over the British at King's Mountain. So that is our consent, that's our agenda for public advocacy. Next is our consideration of approval. Well, we've got the consent agenda next.
We do.
And I believe we have six items.
We do. We have six items, and just before that, wanted to announce that the Municipal Power Agency will be holding elections in November, and that currently the mayor of Statesville is being nominated to serve on that board, and one of the candidates that the city will be supporting in that. Then we move into our six items on the consent agenda. Would ask that you consider approving those in a single motion unless someone would like something removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, would like to tell you that that includes minutes from the August fifth meeting, also minutes from a closed session that was held on August the fifth, tax releases in the amount of nine-hundred forty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents, several budget amendments. The first one is twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and that is to transfer funds to pay the city's share of the cost for the Economic Development Incentive Building Reuse Grant for Jackson Corrugated. The second is to transfer eleven thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents remaining financing money from the sewer capital project that we have just completed, and to move that into the sewer fund to pay outstanding loan, the outstanding loan principal for that project. Similarly, in public safety, four thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-six cents to make an early debt payment, and that is also funding left over from the financing of two thousand and seventeen public safety vehicles. And finally, consideration of a lease and an easement from Foothills Conservancy of North Carolina for the location of a new emergency electric generator that will serve to power City Hall during times of power outage, and that is going to be located on their property just across the drive-through.
Do we have any items from council that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing no action, to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Under new business, we have consideration of approval of a contract to purchase a trailer-mounted, high-pressure sewer jetting unit distribution collection division. Sally?
You know, Water Resources always wins the award for the longest titles, right? So within the nineteen-twenty CIP budget, we did budget to replace some equipment in the Water Resources Division, and this is one of those. We were able to look at this piece of equipment. It is used for flushing out sewer mains and also for cleanouts and laterals and all kinds of things in the sewer system that need to be taken care of. We were able to find this offered on the North Carolina Sheriff's Association Heavy Equipment Purchasing Contract, basically, and so we are recommending that we award this in the amount of sixty-five thousand eighty-three dollars and thirteen cents through the Sheriff's Association. Can tell you that we budgeted seventy thousand, so we are underneath our budgeted amount.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the purchase of a trailer-mounted, high-pressure sewer jetting unit from Southern Vac for the amount of sixty-five thousand eighty-three dollars and thirteen cents.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure can't let it back up, can we?
No, you can't let it back up. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of award of contracts in several departments. Sally?
Yes, also in our nineteen-twenty capital improvement program, there are purchases for several pieces of equipment, and that is routine purchases and replacements of equipment that we have used over a period of years. In order to get a better financing, these pieces of equipment are being financed by an installment purchase contract. In order to get better rates on that from the banks, we combine them all into one bid, and the total for the equipment is eight hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. And we'll talk about each one. So the compass is getting a new bucket truck, and that is replacement of an old truck. We were able to purchase that off of the NJPA, which is one of the purchasing co-ops that we have used quite frequently, and that is for an all-tech truck for one hundred and four thousand dollars, five, one hundred and four, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We also will be purchasing eight public safety vehicles from Elderton Dodge, which is also through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association contract. Upfit for that, and the contract totals four hundred thousand dollars. In addition, in public safety, we have two service trucks, one animal control truck, and then one vehicle in our detective division. Those are coming from Modern Chevrolet of Winston-Salem. They also received that bid through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association purchasing contract for a total of a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for those pieces of equipment. That's the total for all four. In public works, we're purchasing two trucks. One is a two-ton dump truck with a snowplow and salt spreader. Maybe we won't have to use it this year, but nevertheless, we are purchasing one in case we do, and that is from Western Carolina Freightliner, and that, again, is through the Sheriff's Association for a total of a hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Finally, in public works, for the trucks, we have a one-ton dump and snowplow from Asheville Ford, again, through the Sheriff's Association purchasing association, and that is sixty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. And then the last piece of equipment is in public works, and it is a utility tractor for the cemetery and grounds crew. That, again, is through the Sourcewell purchasing contract, and that will come from New South Tractor LLC, and that amount is fifty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. All of those equipment purchases are under the amount that we budgeted.
I've been advised by council that we do need separate motions, so we have six separate motions. What's the wish of council?
I'll be happy to take a couple of them.
Go ahead, Forrest.
Think there's enough to go around with this, don't you? Move to award a purchase contract to Altec Industries for an AT-237 bucket truck with attachment through the NJPA Sourcewell Contract Number zero-one-two-four-one-eight-alt in the amount of a hundred and four thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. What's the wish of council?
Move to award a purchase contract to Elderton Dodge for eight patrol vehicles through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association, and upfit equipment through the North Carolina State Contract, all in the amount of four hundred thousand.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a purchase contract to Modern Chevrolet of Winston-Salem for two service trucks, one animal control truck, and one CID vehicle through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association in the amount of a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a purchase contract to West Carolina Freightliners for a two-ton dump truck and snowplow and salt spreader through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. What's the wish of council?
Motion to one-ton-
Purchase a one-ton dump truck and snowplow from Asheville Ford through the NC Sheriff's Association for $65,520.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a purchase contract to New South Tractor LLC for a Kubota utility tractor for cemetery and grounds through the Sourcewell NJPA contract in the amount of $56,637.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of award of financing to BBNT. Sally?
So, this is the financing for all of the equipment that we just awarded contracts for, and you will recall that when we finance this equipment, we finance it for terms that are equal to about half of their estimated useful lives. So, we have several terms. We have the three- and four-year terms for the equipment, and that is everything except the Compass bucket truck. And those are being financed by BBNT. We received three bank bids, but BBNT was the lowest responsible bidder, and those are being financed for 2.03 percent. The Compass truck is being financed for a five-year term at 2.05 percent.
It's a great financing rate. What's the wish of council?
Move to award financing in the amount of $898,394 to BBNT at a rate of 2.03 percent for the three- and four-year term, and a 2.05 percent for the five-year term.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of appointments to boards and commissions. It's a mayor royal appointment. Our Human Relations Commission is a committee established by the mayor and city council to address matters involving race, discrimination, human relations, and to encourage and promote tolerance and goodwill to all people. I'd like to appoint Jennifer Muah to fulfill an unexpired term on the Human Relations Commission. The term will expire on May 3rd, 2020. Next, and this is a handout that was given to you just before the meeting started, is the consideration of award of contract for feasibility study for a children's museum and discovery center. Sally?
For several months now, there has been a group of about 15 individuals who have been working toward creating a board and applying for, in a more formal manner, a 501(c)(3) status in order to create a group that will ultimately serve a thinkatorium. And this is for the development of a children's discovery center and looking at the possibility and feasibility of doing that somewhere in downtown Morganton. The location not decided yet. There is a private donor who has offered to build the facility and to pay for the architectural services. Last month, you adopted two budget amendments, a $15,000 state grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce and $15,000 from Linda and Eddie Wall in order to help pay for the feasibility study for this. Looking at trying to establish a proper building size, cost, attendance numbers, looking at the market for this, and then setting up a sustainability plan as the museum and discovery center would be established, and then how it sustains itself going forward. Consult Econ LLC is a company in Cambridge, Massachusetts that does this work and has done this all over. You have in your packet of information examples of projects that they have worked with. They submitted a proposal for $35,000. That is $30,000 that we have collected, and then $5,000 for expenses of travel and everything related to the project. It's believed that this study could be done within about 60 days, 60 to 75 days, if we award this contract. The $5,000 would come from funding budgeted in the 19-2020 Main Street budget.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract for $35,000 to Consult Econ Incorporated for the purpose of performing a feasibility study for a children's discovery center in downtown Morganton.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, I noticed, I think, there's at least 10 different projects that they've worked on, from Arkansas to Louisiana to Nevada, New York, Connecticut, Illinois, Missouri. So, it sounds like they've got some practical experience.
I think they do, and in looking, you know, in trying to find information on who could submit proposals, they definitely were a standout, and they have done this. There really aren't a large number of these in the country. The other one that was looked at is on the West Coast, and so this, I mean, they have done some really nice work, so I think it will be a good relationship.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have anything else to come before council? Nothing on your desk, Sally?
I would just really like to say a big thank you to all the city employees and everybody, and Abby mentioned it, but really, last weekend is an awesome event. It is very stressful leading up to it, and there is an awful lot that takes place. Work on next year's event will start next week, and it takes that long to put it together. It is not just the city employees and folks, it is the community, because there's over 250 community employees. It's the people in the community and the surrounding areas that attend. It's everybody that enjoys that experience that makes it what it is.
And Sally, some of the employees not only did it as our in-kind services, but also stayed many more hours as volunteers as well.
I came through town Sunday morning going to church.
Clean as can be.
It was a pain.
The only thing left are chalk marks down in front of the Chamber of Commerce. That's all that's left.
They may go if it ever rains again.
Anything else?
Really appreciate that, and also the sponsors, and I know Abby talked about that too, and Carolina's Healthcare has been the presenting sponsor for the last six years, I believe, and it takes a variety of other sponsors, too. And we had discussion earlier in the evening, and yes, Case Farms is one of our longtime community sponsors of that event, along with many other events in the community. The city is very proud of its relationship for decades with Case Farms.
And I would add that one of our local nonprofits, you know, we talk about how many nonprofits they make money? One of our local nonprofits set a record this year, they raised $15,000.
Wow. So, for you at home that maybe didn't hear Sharon, one of the things that is the greatest thing about the festival is that our local nonprofits get to participate, and for most of them, it is their largest fundraiser of the year. And Sharon just reported that one of them this year set a new record and collected $15,000 for help in serving their mission over the next year.
Great. Again, Mike and Kate, welcome to the community. We're glad to have you. If nothing else, we're adjourned.